Regular meeting agenda for the Hollister Airport Advisory Commission Wednesday, May 22 at 6:00 P. M. Can I get a roll call? Chairperson Renee Wells here. Vice Chair John Hughes, absent. Commissioners Eric Martin.
Here.
Andreas Rodriguez.
Present.
Sean Herrera.
Present.
And Secretary Jeff Kraschew.
Here.
Here.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Verification of agenda posting. The agenda for the regular Airport Advisory Commission of the City of Hollister, meeting of May 22, posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on May 16 at 10:00 A. M. per government code section 549, 54.2. Do we have any public input?
We do have one public speaker, Ruth Erickson.
I am sorry I wasn't here at the last meeting. I'm losing my voice. You're probably happy to hear that. I just want to say that I'm very happy that we finally, after more than three years, got a reasonable-sized airport sign, which we waited for, for a long time. And people are actually seeing the sign now. And also wondered what's going on with our meeting room, our conference room. So sometime I hope to hear about it, because we haven't had a meeting in so long. I don't know how many members we've got left.
Jeff will reply to that at the...
In the report outs.
Report outs. And it was Jeff who made sure the signs got correctly made. So the airport staff and Jeff and the city manager all worked together, and I like them too. Thank you. Any more public input?
That is the end of the speakers.
Okay. Consent agenda. Approve the March 27, 2024 minutes of the Airport Advisory Commission regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Commission business.
Chair Wells, would you just take the final vote on that? The final vote on approving the consent agenda. There was a first and a second, but no vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Commission business. 2024-25 airport budget review. Airport director to review the 2024-2025 airport budget, provide a staff report, and then we will go to public comment.
Okay. Well, for those in attendance in the public, did you all get a copy of the budget summary there on the table, made available to you? So for the, so our fiscal year '23-24 budget for perspective, and we'll break this down into first revenues and then expenditures. So in fiscal year '23-24, we were budgeting airport-only revenues of $1.3 million. That is actually increasing slightly to about $1.5 million. So based on our CPI increases. And so at the summary level, that's about a little over $200,000 increase in revenues. Based on that, also, I believe we filled a few hangar units that we hadn't had filled for most of this past year. So this number has gone up a little bit due to that sense, too. If we come down then into the revenue section here. You can see our various sources of revenue funding here. So we get a nice, somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000 is what we're projecting for fiscal year '24-25 of the property tax paid on aircraft. We have state assistance, which is actually the Caltrans aid program of $10,000 a year. We have CAL FIRE that pays for landing fees there. So that's an estimation based on what we historically have seen. So that one's much more variable depending on fire season and that kind of activity. Very minimum interest income in my perspective here. Part of that's because the airport doesn't have a lot of money in a working fund balance. So we don't have money invested in the LEAF and earning interest on that. So very minimum interest. And then our three, I would say our, let's see, one, two, three, four. So our next four categories really is where the majority of the funding for the airport comes from. And that is storage fee. And when we talk about storage fee, this is where we have the T-hanger buildings, and we have the half units, and we rent those half units out for storage. Ground leases. So a ground lease first, in such cases like the Wiscero Building where they leased, you know, let's call it an acre, and then they put in a parking lot and built their building in an apron space. So that's an example of a ground lease. And then our airport hangers, that's where we have, right now, we have about 100 hangar units that are actually like the T-hangers or the 50 by 50 box hangers. And then we have about another additional 15 spaces that are kind of community hangar space. So for those of you that were on the tour, you may remember the weather, the building had the ultralights in it. And then we had another hangar a little further up the ramp there that had five or so, had like the fighter jets and a couple of other older Warbird-type aircraft in. That's community hangar space when you're assigned space on the floor. And then our building rents are such things as like DK turbines out there. They rent the building to do their business. So that's a full building lease there. And just for edification, we have our FBO here in attendance tonight. They are one of the ground leases. So contribute to that as well. And then coming on down through there, we get fuel, which again has to do with the FBO. So the airport tie-downs, that tie-downs are actually managed by the FBOs, and they remit some of that payment to us. So that's where we get that money from. The feeling, this is where we get a fuel flow fee. So the airport does not have to maintain staff in order to operate the fuel farm and fueling trucks. And so it's nice to have the FBO in place, and we get a fuel, fuel, fuel flow fee. Need to say that slow. And then we had, over the past three years, we've had three grants related to COVID. They were called different things under their American Rescue. We called it the CISA Grant and the CARES Act Grant. So you see those monies there. So then our perspective on expenditures, for example. To be comparative, the expenditures up in the top box here, that's more broken out into its categories, the major categories being personnel, services and supplies, what we call contractual category, interdepartmental charges, and then capital improvements, and then transfers out. So I can start off by explaining at a high level. And then we have detail that gives a little bit of like a perspective of the highest, what contributes to the highest mountain in those categories. So obviously with personnel, airport funds, full-time four positions. That would be airport director, maintenance and operations specialist, a maintenance worker position, an administrative assistant position, and then a senior services assistant position. So basically two office staff, two FTE for office staff, two in the maintenance area, and then your director. If we look at the category of personnel costs, we get this given to us by the finance department because there's so many specifics about benefits and stuff that go into that. So they give us that number based on various trends. Now, in '23-24, you will notice that there's an estimated amount here of about $560,000, almost $570,000 in salary expense. That is a salary savings. So it was 700 and approximately $47,000, $48,000 was budgeted last year as the estimate. And we're saying it's coming in now much lower than that. But that's due to two reasons. One, the administrative assistant position was retired at December 31, and that has not been filled at the full-time rate. We've been using a temporary position to help us out in the office. And then the airport director position was not filled until October. So you had four months of salary savings there. Coming down into the services and supplies then, this is where your top five expenditure items in this. There's many accounts that contribute to this one, but it's a handful of a hodgepodge of smaller ones. But this is the major ones. So in professional services, we have a $100,000 line item. Right now, that is looked at as we would like to go out to an RFQ for an economic impact report for a study on the airport's economic impact. I've seen no kind of report for that, so it's very hard for us to gauge. And so when we're talking with these groups like the EDA and other groups like GoBiz or the MBET people and even the Tech Hub, it would be nice to have some quantifiable economic impact of the airport now. And then hopefully what we're asking support for, some estimate to add to that, right? We would like to do the rent study that we've all talked about. We've heard concerns from the tenants, that, from some tenants, that rents may be too high. So again, an official airport-to-airport compares and for rent study, that's something that we would accomplish through going out for our RFQ and getting a planning consultant onboard. That's typically done by those types of groups. And then the second part of that, the balance of that would remain for airport consultant services. So the other kind of airport consultant services is airport engineering. So the engineering discipline is where they tend to help us with airport capital improvement project administration and submitting for the FAA airport improvement grants each year. We also, FAA got money, much like we got CARES money. They got something called the bipartisan law money assigned to them. So we call it the bill money. So our bill project for this year, for example, is to relocate a portion of the airport perimeter fence, because it's technically not outside the runway safety area at one end. That's at the 2-4 end of the crosswind runway. So anyway, that's where airport consultant services typically, if you're doing nothing else, they're helping with the administration of that portion and writing grant applications in a year. So that would be the minimum threshold there. Coming down to contractual. So obviously, the airport maintains a automated weather operating system that does the weather reporting out for pilot information. So typically, that is about $7,500 for the company to come out and check it three times. One time is an inspection that is accompanied by an FAA representative. So, but the reason this has increased to, where did that go I just was looking at? So the reason that that particular piece went up, oh, I skipped down the contractual, I'm sorry. So the way, so the automated weather system is $43,500 because there's a, one of the altitude, no, it's not the altitude. It's called the solometer. It tells you whether your sky is clear or whether it's obstructed. That unit is very old and it's non-reparable. So if it breaks, we would have to replace it. And the estimated cost on that is around $32,000 to $34,000. So. And I'm sorry, I'm going to go back up to the services and supplies because I skipped down there. So the second highest category in services and supplies is a handful of maintenance accounts. So one, we would have maintenance on our buildings, hangar maintenance. Possibly restrooms may need addressing, and we certainly know one does. And then airfield lighting and building lights, too. We've been trying to replace some of the exterior lights. And then we like to track when we do crack seal and other types of preventative maintenance on pavement so that we can report back out if FAA were to ask us how much we've been trying to maintain or keep the pavement to a certain condition. So. Coming down below that, and the next thing was right around that same threshold, almost $87,000 as well. So your airport has to have property insurance, and we have to have liability insurance. And so right now, those are looking at that level. As we all are at home, we're paying utility bills, and utility bills are increasing. So water, sewer, gas, and electric, about $60,000 a year. Other miscellaneous supplies that, where we try to do various other types of repairs or maintenance is about $30,000. And then this also, this category also includes our, what we call advertising, trainings, and the NBAA conference. And so in particular, just the line item for NBAA, which is the advertising budget here, is approximately $30,000. So. So coming back down to the contractual, then, yes, we talked about the automated weather system and the airfield pest control services. So for those of you that have frequented the airport or been out there for the tour recently, you may have noticed that the squirrels are starting to feel like they're kind of running the house out there. So we need to have a game plan to get some control of that. So again, relatively small contracts, because in contrast to the former airports I've worked for, the Hollister Airport, we try to do a lot of things in-house with our own staff versus going out to contracted service. And so that helps to keep this category low. As an enterprise fund, we are a component part of the city. And so it is very normal for the city to have internal departmental charges. And it just so happened that just before this meeting, I was surprised to have the IT director come out and help me with a computer issue. But we got to talking, and I knew that there was possibly a change. But these numbers are still being developed. And so what I realized in that conversation is this is one of the categories that is likely to change a bit in our final budget, because those numbers are still being worked on. And so then capital improvement. So two things about this. So one, again, we try to do as much as we can internally and through our own service. So you have here, the airport likes to have equipment there for us to perform our jobs out there. So we use a remote mower to mow several of the banks in the uneven categories, because we do have the, it's called a creek, but it's the ditch for the creek runs through the property. You can't really get the tractor down into that. So this would be buying a new one. The airport right now has to ask Public Works to borrow one, and it breaks off. And then we can't rely on it and that sort of thing. So we'd like to get one if it works in our budget. And then the transfer section here. This goes again with, we anticipate getting two grants from FAA this year. So we would be bringing those forward, hopefully to the council to receive in somewhere around the August, first part of September timeframe. So the airport improvement project is your reconstruct taxiway alpha design only work. And that's approximated to be about an $800,000 project. And so we have a 10% grant match minus what Caltrans would participate with roughly 5%. So you see a 5% grant match there of $45,000. And then your, again, bipartisan infrastructure law, the bill money. That's the relocate a section of perimeter fence. That 10% is about $20,000. We're not sure if this is on the Caltrans list right now, so we're not sure it's eligible for grant match. So that could get reduced if it's eligible under grant match. But from a budget, you always want to budget conservatively. So we budget it at the higher expenditure level there. So with that, let's jump back up to the top here and talk about the, again, high-level annual perspective here. So last year, or in this current fiscal year, when I joined in October, we had a total expenditure budget of about $2.8 million. And that included 1. almost $5 million. One million of that was for capital improvement, which was to demolition the old military buildings. And then also the improved, the access road that is degrading. The pavement back there is degrading. And so, and then we had $450,000 in equipment purchases. And due to some issues on identifying funding sources, we did not enact, did not go forward on the improvement. So we still need to try to identify funding sources for that. But you see that there, the improvement is rebudgeted in the fiscal year '24-25 category there in capital. So again, it's about. So this 1.4 million in the capital improvement, again, if you go down to your section there, $65,000 of that was for the mower. The rest of that is for the west side access road as well as the pavement that comes up between the road, what's technically the road line versus up to the back of the hangers there. So given that, this is really pretty much a status quo budget in that it doesn't really make any significant change in any one particular category. But what you do see here is, if you go down the '23-24 estimated column, we are looking at about $234,000 as the estimated negative ending position on the one-year perspective. And then going into '24-25, of course, we would actually be, right now, until these numbers are fully finalized, at least at this point, that I developed this exhibit for this discussion purpose, we were at $70,000 where revenues are below expenditure. So it added to that negative position. So if this were the adopted budget today, we would be looking at a negative position of $305,000. Now, fiscally, that, so a couple of things that I would say to the commission. Fiscally, that that so a couple of things that I would say to the to the um commission here. So, one, we have a federal obligation that says we are supposed to be trying to operate the airport as a sustainable entity, meaning that it's not reliant on funding from any other source, right? So, whatever all of our pockets of ways that we can make our revenue out off of the airport property, that should be trying to fund the cost of the operation. So, clearly, what this perspective is showing you is it's, this is not now. So, this is where we have to look and say, where can we look to grow our revenues, right? And so, we are gonna transition out of this topic to staff reports out. And I got a request to give you an update on taxiway Y and Z and and we can kind of morph into that discussion, because the one area that we can focus on, something that we can control right now as we go forward, is we can focus on brown lease um space over by Whisk, mostly on the west side. We have about, wanna say between five and no more than about ten acres. And then, as we develop the taxiway system that would connect the business park. So, so that there's pockets where we can develop around that taxiway system. And so, that's really the one category that we currently control today without having to acquire more property. And then, of course, the other piece there is that we have the potential for through the fence. But again, before you can really start charging a whole lot of through-the-fence permits and before the business park landowners can actually attract people to the business park, we really gotta get those taxiways built, right? It's hard for people to imagine seeing that connection without the pavement actually being there. So, that's a that's a big piece. So, first of all, our challenge as as a commission is to look and say how, you know, you guys can can do your own research, but I'm open to discussions about how we grow airport revenues. So, we, that is a focus. We, cause the expenditure level, in my opinion, is is at a very minimum. We are, we do not have, you know, we know that like our hangers, the hangers right there behind the airport admin staff, so the T-hangers on the on the east side, those are over thirty-year-old units. They've reverted to us, so they're our responsibility to maintain. If we don't start investing dollars into maintaining those buildings, they're going to become a liability and nobody's gonna wanna be in them and rent them, and then this this goes negative, right? So, like a flat tire, that you get a hole in it, and if you don't start doing something, you're gonna be completely flat tire. So, the hangers that we call the new hangers, the new hangers. So, we gone, the new hangers on the west side, they're they're twenty-five years old. And we know that the pavement in between the hangers and the and the grading in between the hangers, we 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 need to get those fixed, right? So, so we know that the paving in between the hangers over there on the west side is is a future airport improvement project with FAA. But again, there's there's this whole cost component of maintaining the buildings that is completely unaddressed at this point. So, we need to kind of take a programmatic look at that and say, how can we start budging this to where we minimally put some money away? And then, you know, the the city, at the at the general fund level, the city has a reserve policy, right? So, typically, they keep what's called fund balance, which is money that that they can rely on on a rainy day or they can, if something unexpected comes up, they can choose to use fund balance to to fund that particular, whatever expenditure item may need to be. Well, the airport currently does not have a reserve. We spend every dollar, obviously, and and go negative, right? So, we couldn't even pay the bills for a month if something happened. So, if we got a COVID and we didn't get rents for for six months, we're really in trouble, right? So, so these are, these are fiscal goals that we need to be working on as a commission, as a team, right? So, we're the administrative side, you guys are the commission. I'm open to ideas and research on on those things. This is where you get into the language of the um the federal obligation. It says you will maintain a a rent and fee structure that makes this sustainable. Okay, so so that's, there's your balance point, what's fair. We hear things, we hear concerns from the tenants. So, where's where's the balance in all of that? And so, we need to work together, so one of those items would be the rent study and we kind of flush those things out and and kind of see where we we lie after we get a rent study done, right? So, with with that, um yeah, this is a very intensive maintenance facility. Those of you that have come out here for the tour, you see that the fence line is in close to the runway safety area. So, there's, there's not an area that you can really leave unmaintained, where we don't mow it or we don't disc it or we don't take care of it, right? And we have two runways with lights, so there's a lot of cost in replacing lights when they're broken or those are, so it's a, it's a maintenance-intensive three hundred acres, right? And so, you're not really going to reduce expenditure levels. That's pretty unrealistic, because there's just a certain level of needing to have it be a safe and kept uh facility. So, our choice is is to try to focus on the growing the revenues, okay? So, with that, I'll open up for any questions from the commission and or public, as you call for it, Chair, thank you.
Does this need to go to public comment beforehand?
It is on our agenda.
Right.
So, so let's call for.
Public comment on the budget? No public comment? We'll move to commission questions and comments. Thanks for.
Chair.
I got a couple too.
Chair, I believe, those.
David Marioni, City Manager. And so, just from a procedural step of the whole budget adoption, I always wanna take them through that process as well. So, what Jeff is presenting tonight is what he has presented uh to to the City Manager's office. We go through a whole process of reviewing uh the budget recommendations compared across the, you know, the entire city. We then bring a a a discussion forward on June fourth, where we bring a draft forward, similar to what Jeff is doing with you this evening, where we talk that through, what what the assumptions are in the budget, where we're at. And then, they often will give direction, they will undoubtedly give direction, and then we would come back on the eighteenth for adoption hearings. And so, that's part of that whole process. Ultimately, um we have to look at it, you know, we have to look at the budget itself and then the whole budget, and that gets presented to council for ultimate authority. So, um it is my role to present the entire city budget and for them to ask questions. So, we'll be in a presentation mode and Jeff may get asked questions up there of the city council as well. And so, I just wanna put that whole perspective in. So, this is not a budget to adopt this evening, and although this is a draft for input, there could be changes along the way. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I have a couple of questions, Jeff. So, are you going to counsel to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget? Or and give them an update on what the estimations are for twenty-three, twenty-four? Because wouldn't it be going from? Well, you're right, it would be Ju- July first through June thirtieth next year, so never mind, sorry about that.
If I could, that actually, that's a good question. So, just last night, we as a city, in part of our our financial controls, we presented what we call the Q Q-three, quarter-three budget monitoring. So, and as part of that report out, it also had an estimated ending number. So, we went through this estimated exercise reported back to our finance department. They provided that to the council last night in an exercise, uh kind of to lead into what's coming up as to what Dave talked about on the fourth and that sort of thing for perspective.
Thank you for that. Under revenues, um is the Elks Lodge under building rents?
Yes.
And then, what what are current unsecured aircraft?
That is the property tax that you guys pay. So, we report the based aircraft every January first to the fifteenth to the county assessor and then the county assessor sends aircraft owners that are based at our airport um uh bill.
Thank you. Are um the airport landing fees just CAL FIRE?
Currently, it's only CAL FIRE that pays landing fees. And I would suggest that that is very typical for our level of airport, both in terms of operations, services, et cetera, right?
Thank you. Under, um let's see, where was I? Under fuel, how much of the overall cost of fuel, if you can tell me, goes to the airport? Is it a percentage? Is it a cent on a, you know?
Well, it it's an established uh fuel flow fee. And and what I would say is that um typical ranges of fuel flow fees that I've seen for when the FBO provides, they they usually it's the truck service where they provide that feeling and then they may also assist at the field farm. It's depending on on various obligations that are a contractual negotiation, that's usually in your FBO agreement. The range is typically somewhere between eight cents and and twenty-five cents. And that's if you're at an airport where there's a considerable amount of traffic and stuff, right? If you're, if you're at a, at an airport where there's lesser operation, you were trying to establish a a FBO service, you might even go lower than the eight cents, because it's like an economic incentive to try to help them be a viable business, right? You wouldn't wanna have that fuel flow too high, or they may not be able to make a profit and exist as a business. So, so that range, again, that eight to somewhere around twenty to twenty-five cents, it depends on what airport you're talking about. There's a lot of factors that go into that and how how the contract, the obligations, who maintains the the tank facilities and and there's a lot of different consideration points in there, so.
If you had to put uh fuel tanks above ground, uh would it be the airports? It would have to come out of the airport budget. Wouldn't be part.
That that is correct.
For the unexpenditures, um you have a column called amount on the left, and in some cases, you don't, like for city attorney under interdepartmental total. All of these amounts, those are the totals that are that total up to the F uh fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes, so so in that category, this is our interdepartmental. And yes, I provided you an example of the departments that that provide charges to the airport, either as direct or indirect charges right now. Currently, that was at the time I put this together, that number was combined with those that you see there. A hundred and twelve thousand dollars, what we're estimating for the next fiscal year. That's probably subject to change, because I know the numbers are gonna be refined. And I, as I checked through some of the details supporting that, I'm thinking we may have missed one before I put together this summary. So, I'll circle back on that, so this category may go up by a little bit.
Okay, I just have one last question. Then I'll let the other commissioners ask questions or comments. The, the council approved funding to remove the old buildings. And I don't know if that was in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget or prior. Improvements could have helped bring more revenue to the airport. Do you know what that amount was that was approved? And then, I know you said you couldn't make the improvements at the airport, um because we were over budget. So, you had to take that money and spend it elsewhere.
So, so again, when 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 I got here, um there was the one point four million, almost one point five million. So, one million of that was for the improvements, repairing the access road on the west side and demolition of the old military buildings. So, the old military buildings were anticipated to be about four hundred and fifty thousand. And they thought they could do the access road improvements by about five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand. So, two things on that. One, as we've done the project and the fire truck has had to, and other heavy vehicles have had to go in and out, right? We've been going around some of the construction area, cause we did a a test strip to, so that they wouldn't have to repair that as part of the road, so we thought we were doing a benefit there. But as other vehicles went around that construction zone, we've seen that the pavement was bad enough that it's caused caused bad pavement to worsen at a much more rapid rate. So, deterioration, the conditions have gotten worse. So, we're now, our latest estimate on on repair of the road is about seven hundred thousand. And then, because of again going around the construction area where we did the test strip, which was meant to benefit by shortening the amount of road we would have to do, by doing that, we've worsened pavement between the technically the line of the road up to the back of the hangers. So, that portion now needs attention, so that's about an additional three hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where you get the the one point, almost four million dollars there in in. So, if you go down to the capital detail, so that's where you get your one point four million. So, the one point four million for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five does not include demolition of the military buildings. That does not mean we can't pursue revenues to still do that. That simply means, at this point, we are deciding not to put in that particular improvement. And we can always bring that forward when we identify the funding source.
Thank you, I I do have one more question. If you're, if you go to try to get funding or a loan to remove those buildings and do some upgrades, they want to see that the airport is um is financially good, right? And so, how do you um? I guess there are grants, you still have to have a match, um but you're pursuing both, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
I got a couple. The restaurant, the Elks Club, and the RV parking at the Elks Lodge, that's all under building rents?
Well, so technically, the restaurant is considered a building, yes. And then, your Elks Lodge, part of their lease, which we categorize as building, because they basically leased the building from us, but it's inclusive of the trailer parking. So, that's, they're getting the revenue off of the trailer parking.
But but they take care of that, that's included.
One building lease payment.
Okay.
So.
Alright, thanks, I was just curious. Under uh services and uh supplies, on replacing the lights and whatnot, are you on a uh some sort of a program that to replace them with LEDs?
Well, certainly, when when we have a grant such as we just had the runway six safety improvement, which was the FAA Airport Improvement Grant, right? So, that included putting new upgraded lights on runway uh six twenty-four. So, those were done at the newest standards, so those were done as LED lights.
Okay, cause I know you can't buy LED regular light bulbs anymore in California, so yeah, I hopefully, we're doing the LED. Okay, because I know you can't buy LED, regular light bulbs anymore in California, so, yeah, hopefully we're doing the LED lights.
Remember, so, so we're in, we're in an airport world.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Airport, airport world, we work off of FAA standards. They're the ones that plan, check our submissions, so. Um, yeah, so luckily we have, it's one of the rare instances that I've seen that we're actually ahead. The FAA had specs for LED lights that they approved.
Um, my other question, uh, on the contractual section, you have, uh, airfield pest control services.
Yes.
Are you doing that, you said you, we were doing that in-house by chance or no?
Well, uh, we do try to do it. I think it's gotten to be, we need some, some assistance. For a period of time because we only have two maintenance workers and technically one just retired back in, in March. And was unavailable for most of, of March and then I think the technical retirement date was on April.
I'm just saying, I, at Fisher Lake, I was the airport manager for a while and we had a problem with squirrels.
Yep.
On the runway. Um, are you using a second kill poison? Do you know?
Um, well, I think we're, that's, we went out and we talked to three different pest control companies. And asked them for, for them to give us a proposal, so.
For, what to use?
Be most effective.
Okay, I just, you know, nobody wants to see an owl dead after eating a poisoned squirrel.
Well, and, and I know that part of it was that over the years, we used to have bait boxes out there. So, they put the bait in, in there and, and so hopefully the squirrel goes in, eats the bait and actually is contained in the box too. So, in those situations, but those boxes, they get weathered and old and break up. And maybe they get bumped by the mower or whatever. And so, over the years, it's dwindled from over a hundred. Being implemented around the facility to there's less than twenty out right now. So, we're looking to reestablish some of that as part of this effort.
Okay. And my last question, I don't know if this is the right timing for it, but taxiway J. I, I was curious why we're removing that. I was looking forward in the capital improvements. And as a pilot, you really, any way to get off the runway is a good way, you know?
I agree with you. Evidently FAA has this belief that, that there are certain, certain designs. That lead to pilot confusion. So, what you'll notice is Juliet is an extension of the old, what they call speed taxiway. Which is when a taxiway is slanted and the pilot does not have to make a right turn, a full ninety-degree turn. So, that's Juliet no longer is the FAA standard for airport geometry. And thus, that's why the Juliet would eventually be going away as part of the next, the, uh, taxiway alpha.
If that had was ninety degrees or perpendicular to the runway, would that satisfy the FAA to leave it alone?
Yes.
It would?
You know, again, they, they're, they're gonna look at it from a certain standard.
I know it's a high speed, but it's a rarely used runway. It's a high-speed taxiway.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it looks like you could almost paint the lines like that and it'd be perfect.
And are you speaking of the, the remnant on the north side of runway two-four or are you speaking on the south side where it connects to the ramp?
Uh, where it connects to the ramp.
Yeah, I think that part is more likely to remain than the other part.
Okay, that's more or less what I was asking about.
Yes, and, and I, so you're actually asking a question from the five-year ACIP table.
Yes.
So, so if you, if you look really closely, is it, is the pavement removal there, I believe it's just the north side remnant.
Okay.
I think they were keeping the, the connection to the ramp.
Hence the question. Okay, I'm done.
Good question.
Thank you.
Um, of, of the rents that we have established, are there any that are gonna be coming up for, uh, or leases that are gonna be coming up for this year? Where there could be a, uh, an, um, an increase?
Well.
Or are they all leased and so they're, they're, they're established for twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five?
So, most leases, and I, and I say most in that probably ninety-nine percent of all leases, right? The airport via city, they established September one as the annual increment date. For where we apply CPI inflators to the leases, so. Um, and I believe those still go into effect, so even if you signed in a new lease now, you would just get September one. I believe you're going to be included in that. I haven't seen language that's otherwise.
And do we have any, uh, of the hangars or whatnot, other buildings being, um, the, the leases being terminated or coming due? And we'll be looking for a new tenant?
Well, certainly I'm not expecting to terminate anybody's lease.
No, no, but, but that are ending.
Use that word. So, so, but, uh, it, it, could a tenant vacate there that? We don't often get a six-month notice, so, so, you know, they, that happens and we just do our best to fill it as quickly as possible.
Well, right, right now, are we, are we anticipating any, 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 um, any tenants leaving? Which will then allow us to establish a new tenant or, or possibly?
Yeah, I mean, you know, again, we, we have a waitlist too, so we would move them in phys- as quickly as we could physically make sure. The airport is in rentable condition, we would pretty much have it rented.
Are you talking about the big hangars or the T-hangers?
And, uh, mo- most of the big hangars, yeah.
And the old Jerry Gabe hangar.
Yeah.
And the, the ones with the multiple planes in them, the old Weatherly. I mean, I know Rabino's on something like a twenty or thirty-year lease, so you could hold your breath on that.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of the T-hangers, which is gonna go into the, into the, into the report that we're looking at doing to estimate those ones. But I meant like some of the, the big other buildings out there where, you know, if we were possibly looking at, you know, because I'm looking at where to generate more revenue, right? So, if somebody was leaving going, hey, we're not gonna be here anymore, it's a great opportunity for us to, to bring a, a new tenant in who's willing to pay. Um, uh, a, a higher, uh, uh, mark, uh, per square foot, uh, rate.
Yeah, so, you know, so like the, so Commissioner Martin mentioned the, uh, Jerry Gabe building. So, that is a community hangar space. So, right now, we have five individual leases of aircraft. That are assigned space within the hangar. And I believe also one, one of the tenants rents an office space in there. So, it would take all of those moving out and clearing the floor. And then I could move, maybe like I could move, like a business might come to us and be interested and we could put a business in there, right? But right now, you know, we would lose that individual. If one plane goes away and we don't put another aircraft back in there, we'd lose that rent right now. It's not uniform where you get a clean break between, between, you lose revenue. It, it'd be nice to say, well, if one plane goes, they all go and you're all out. And then move a business in and, and rent it at a higher level because of a higher use, right? But, yeah.
Thank you. I just, just looking at just, I mean, everything's, we've got a lot of small little, you know, potatoes here that are, I mean, they're not.
That's right.
Really affect much.
Yeah.
And so, we have to go to the, the larger scale revenue generating, um, sectors that were, were, you know, five percent of those large numbers. Could be significant to, to offset the, the deficit. Um, but, thank you for the budget. It's, it's very, very well done.
And, and I think to your point there, Sean, is, you know, again, we're looking at how can we? Something like the idea of like the Brownfield Grant where Chair Wells has, has looked at that and said, you know. Brownfield, the EDA, and she and I had a discussion with the EDA rep. They would pay to demo it and to build the replacement building. So, if we were able to do that, you know, that's a great thing, right? There might be a ten percent grant match. And if we had to ask for that match to come from the city, it's a one-time contribution. For a structural revenue that's gonna help us become sustainable in a long period of time. I'd rather have the city support us with, with a one-time to create something that's gonna generate us revenue over a period of time. So, it fixes the problem long-term, right? So, so that's a perfect example of that where something we need to still pursue.
Jeff, we have, do we have any long-term leases that they paid, you know, a reasonable fee for lease rent? For a time and maybe their lease is coming up? And, and then it will get increased to what it should be at this level, you know?
Well, I think two things. I mean, so one, we have to assume that when the airport entered into leases. Those, those, some of the leases go very far back, right? The airport was in a entirely different perspective twenty years ago. Think about how, how much Hollister has changed. That, that's been replicated at your airport business, the nature of what goes on at the airport, what kind of aircraft come in. All of those kinds of conditions, so a lot of different factors of, have, have done that. So, again, one of the ways that is the fairest way to look and reevaluate. What the airport is in terms of an asset, what our market comparable values are, is to do this rent study. And so, as we do the rent study, we would, out of that, have a better idea of what we think a, a true. Uh, building rent is, what a ground lease rate is, the, all of those things. So, we would be looking at all those kinds of charges that we want to charge at our airport. We would include in the rent study to, to look at and say, how do we compare that? You know, we would be looking for other comparable military airport facilities. We'd be looking for ones that have similar levels of services at the field, age of infrastructure. Those are the types of factors for the airport-to-airport comparison. And then there's a little bit of a component that is weighted. That is your regional comparison with what they call your competitive airports, which our competitive airports are probably. You know, possibly Watsonville, possibly Salinas, uh, definitely San Martin, right? That's, that's a fifteen to twenty-minute drive some days. Um, so that somebody could have their plane there very easily or here. So, what our comparables are in terms of, of those market rates that your locals has, but it's a little bit different weighting. And so, again, that rent study is really a, a valuable technique. And it takes out the conjecture and, and a lot of the discussion.
I'm thinking about, um, something like the Elks Lodge. And I don't know if that would be in the rent study, but I know their lease is coming up and they've had it for, I think, thirty years. Um, and they probably paid a, a minimal fee and they're a great organization. I'm not trying to say we need to really increase it or the city. But, um, it seems like that revenue could really help us if, if you brought it up to a level that was, uh, consistent with.
Yeah.
What the building is worth or.
Well, I think, I think, number one, I think, you know, so first of all, you can't just go in and apply one rate. Because you believe the business does better than another business, right? So, the airport has to be fair. That's one of our federal obligations. So, all building rents should be reasonably the same. You can't discriminate between you, the tenants. So, you can't say, oh, well, that FBO is just making a bunch of money over there, so they should be paying way more. That Elks Lodge, oh, my goodness. So, but there are different things that if you're renegotiating contracts. Maybe, maybe the nature of the airport, you know, I've seen where there's a one percent profit sharing. With, with businesses that are, so if you have some sort of, so there might be provisions or something like that. That a company updating the rate based on the rent study.
Is, is.
Instead of strong-arming the existing companies, why don't we look at Amazon? They're right across the street. Tell me they wouldn't fly in here with the extra long runway, the landing fees, the across-the-fence agreement. The, the whole shebang. That's where you're gonna make your money, not ten dollars on a T-hanger.
No.
I was informed that, um, the city was told that Amazon was not interested in, in flying aircraft. Into that facility that's been built out there next to the airport. So, at this point, we have no reason to believe that's changed at this point. But, um, yeah, at the time, and clearly we didn't design anything currently to tie into that project. Like a taxiway and an apron for an aircraft to go to that building. So, if, if that maybe happened in the future, but it, it won't be to that building most likely.
Well, I know it won't be directly to that building, but if, they could probably have a satellite building where they receive packages, I believe.
That certainly, I think, is a, is a future opportunity. We hope that comes our way, right? Because the through-the-fence access permit and, and stuff, that, that's gonna help.
Landing fees.
Any revenue at this point is gonna help.
Lots of gas.
Who, who determines the, or negotiates the term of the lease, like for Elks Lodge and other long-term leases? Or is the city or the airport, um, doing long-term leases anymore? Are you gonna try to just do a year-by-year so that you can increase them on a regular?
Well.
Or are they increased yearly, just like the hangars?
So, first of all, so the, the council has the authority as the governing body to approve the rates that go in leases, right? So, but it's our job as airport to, and, and city to be recommending the fair rates. And so, how are we meeting our federal obligation of being fair? That's with something like the documented rent study. We make the recommendation, we implement those in, in leases as they're either coming up for extensions or coming up for renewals. Where, where basically you're entering into a new lease, right? So, there's those benchmarks that you do. So, that, that's really where, where you have the opportunity to, to get the rate set to a more fair level. But I think to Commissioner Martners, Martin's comment there. As we get more advanced aircraft wanting to come in, let's say, hopefully for through-the-fence access, maybe it is a shipper or something like that. It's gonna introduce different aircraft. They're gonna be coming more regularly. It's gonna be much more similar to a CAL FIRE. So, that would hopefully, they're gonna consume more fuel on the field, so, so our share of the fuel is gonna go up. Um, the idea of the landing fees. If somebody's coming in here regular and it's, and it's heavier than a twelve thousand five hundred pound aircraft. Maybe we wanna look at charging that group the landing fees, right? So, I wouldn't say we put arbitrary landing fees out there just because at this juncture, I don't think we get enough. Business jet activity to, to start saying it's, it's worth putting landing fees in for, for just any aircraft that comes in. That happens to be over a certain weight. But I think select users that are intense users such as CAL FIRE, the landing fee definitely makes sense.
Well, more than business jets aren't.
Aren't for profit, you know? They come in once, twice a year, whatever. Amazon would be for profit. They're using our runway for profit.
It, it certainly has the image of, of profitability when, when, and when the jets are sitting out there, right? That's my favorite thing about the airport is to see the jets sitting out there.
They buy fuel.
Yes, so any, any other suggestions or comments?
I have one more, sorry. Um, for CAL FIRE, have they started paying, uh, lease or rent? On their property where they're expanding?
They are paying a holding fee, so, so they're, they, they are paying a fee that comes in, their monthly fee increased. And then there's a different level that it goes to once, I believe, once its construction starts.
So, not, um, when they break ground?
Yeah.
Okay.
When construction starts, it, it just, it moves from, it's a little bit lesser fee and then it goes, takes another step when construction starts.
Okay, thank you.
No, great, uh, thank you, Director. Yeah, it's a, a great, um, explanation there of the budget. I just had a quick question on the, uh, the federal, the FFA, um, the grants. You mentioned, um, at least with taxiway A, um, that has the match with CAL Trans at five percent. That's already set. Um, and then what you're waiting for is the, the. Um, and then what you're waiting for is the, the perimeter fence? You're waiting on, you're currently waiting on Caltrans for a response?
Well, so, so two things have to happen here. So, number one, we have to get the official award from FAA. So, those are still somewhat in question. So, some things have to happen sequentially to add up. But, yes, at this point, we usually anticipate getting the federal award in August. So, once you have your federal award letter, then you submit for the state grant match. And that is with Caltrans Division of Aeronautics. And so technically, there's a list that we keep on file with them of projects. If you're not on that list and you're asking for a match grant, um, then you're, you're not eligible because they're trying to plan from their budget to support us. So, that's the thing, I'm not sure that the relocate perimeter fence made it on the last list revision. So, it technically, it may not. So, uh, we anticipate that to be about a two hundred thousand dollar project. So, we'll know more once we get back our, our response to proposals on that. Um, so, yeah, it's reflected here as at the full ten percent versus just five percent.
Okay, and both are anticipated for August or for a response?
August, first part of September timeframe. Keep our fingers crossed that it goes through.
Okay, great, yeah. Yeah, definitely reached out to, uh, uh, our congressional counterpart and, you know, just to keep updated there, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, and so these, these two are the only FFA, FAA, um, grants, the projects currently that we have submitted? Uh, or do we have more in the works?
Well, as, as we transition into the next thing, we were gonna talk about Taxiway of, or Taxiway Y and Z. So, our theoretical Taxiway system that connects to the west side of the airport, right? Which tees up our areas for further ground leasing and hanger development. And it allows for the connection of the business park and people would be able to actually see it and touch it. So, that's gonna make that park much more of a marketable situation. That should propel us in the, in the right direction in a big way towards becoming sustainable as an airport. So, I am pleased to announce that, uh, City of Hollister, we submitted for two earmark requests to Congresswoman Lofgren's office. And both projects have made the final fifteen selection items, which is being referred to the Appropriations Committee. So, and one of those is ten million dollars asked for the, uh, airport. So, that would provide funding for the Taxiway, uh, Y and Z and possibly that should cover the utilities to tee up the building pads for the ground leases as well as improve the access roads so that no longer would we have the need for vehicles to cross the runway in the future as the field trucks may need to get around to, to that side. They could go along a real true paved, paved perimeter road, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great news. And, and I think that, um, especially, you know, in the past, um, we've seen that Congresswoman, uh, Lofgren has, you know, provided some funds to a lot of communities in the district. And we've seen maybe San Benito County has been left out, Hollister's been left out. So, maybe we can, I know we're in the, in the finalist list, right? And everything's, uh, I've, I've looked at the website, it's accessible to kinda see the, uh, the list there for the different cities. Um, maybe we can provide some type of, you know, uh, op-ed or something and, uh, on Benito Link or just to, just to let them know that we have this, uh, this push and drive going. Um, I don't know if it can be something that we can, uh, maybe have as a consensus as a, as a commission or just so the community knows that, um, we're pushing to get these, you know, funds for, and not just the airport, but, you know, that, which will better, uh, uh, the community as a whole, you know, in the long run. So, um, I'm really glad that, you know, we're, we're pushing forward with this after, uh, as you mentioned, so many years of kinda non-activity, yeah.
I, I would suggest that, that an effort beyond going like what you spoke of about Benito Link and stuff, maybe the commission could consider, um, either soliciting letters of support and/or developing a letter of support amongst the commission as well for, for the project.
Is this something that has to be, um?
We'd like to recommend this, you manager?
Chair?
I just wanted to see if it needed to be a motion that has to come before the council to be able to do that, or?
Well, it would start by needing to be agendized on your own agenda, on a future agenda for discussion and, and then, um, a recommendation to council, depending on what, what exactly you wanted to do, but likely a recommendation to council.
Thank you.
So, I just wanna take a minute to acknowledge the work of, uh, Jeff and our Assistant City Manager on the earmarks, but also to extend gratitude to all of you. Um, and we did have a, um, a groundbreaking ceremony back, I wanna say, in January, where we did have the Congresswoman out. Most of you were, were in attendance in some shape, form, or fashion. Uh, she did come back out and visit and got a tour of, you know, the, the fixed base operators, operations, and, and spent a lot of time there. And, uh, this was a process that basically we had, it was released on a Thursday with a due date of a Tuesday. And, um, you know, staff really jumped in there and Jeff and Rod and the rest of the team. And so, really a group effort. And it's, you know, it was a very short window, so that naturally gives you a smaller amount of applications. We made the, the top fifteen and, uh, we're gonna continue to work to hopefully see that through to the finish line. I think it would be a, a transformational, uh, amount of funding that would come in and kinda bring a lot of these concepts from paper to, to bring them to life. So, I just wanna take a minute to, to thank all of you for your support on that.
Thank you very much. That's a great and great collaboration in such a short time to get it done or get us on the top list.
Yeah, excellent. Um, that's, that's such a, a small window to, to jump on. As a federal supplier in my personal life, um, the idea of doing anything on that level so quickly is, is, is extremely challenging. Um, as also part of Benito Link, I sit on the, on the, um, on the board there. We're, i- i- in, in efforts, Benito Link's always looking for new stories, especially highlighted things like this. This is tremendous, ten million dollars if we can get this. I, I would be fully behind, um, doing some sort of, 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 of article or op-ed to, 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 uh, to at least get the word out there, uh, to the public and whatnot. I'm sure it, it would go a long way as well. If, if, if the, you know, we, um, essentially have the, the whole city behind it and what we have going on is kind of almost in the marketing aspect of it for, for Zo to keep pushing a lot, a lot of these, a lot of these efforts right along. So, I mean, and, and I think, I think, uh, you know, positive news goes a long, long way. I'd be, I'd be behind it completely. I don't know what we need to go into doing that, but I don't know. I, I think that's, it's just such good news, I'm like, woo.
Yeah, and, and, uh, the, uh, uh, the feedback from the community goes a long way. If, let's say, you know, after we agendized it and, you know, it, it's approved, uh, to, to put this out there, you know, in the, you know, let's say Benito Link and, and the papers. Um, if, you know, there is like, you know, a call to action to just reach out to Congresswoman Lofgren's, um, you know, office to let them know that, you know, we, we need help as well. You know, we need these, kinda these funds and, um, just to have, uh, to show their office that the community is in support. And, and Congresswoman Lofgren really does appreciate, uh, this community that she will now be representing. And so, um, I think that will just let her know that, you know, we, we wanna help out our community as well. Thanks.
I think it's a great idea. And maybe we can also mention that we're, that the city is applying for, or looking into applying for an EDA grant to extend the Taxiways, uh, the Brownfield Grant, just to let people know that we're really trying to focus on, um, doing that. It doesn't mean we've got the grant.
Jeff, we don't have that grant yet. We don't have that grant yet?
Which grant?
The Zo Lofgren one.
No, we're finalists.
You're finalists, finalists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't think we shouldn't wait till we get the grant?
I think, uh, any news, we're, we're, you know, getting out there that we're doing this and would, would, would help, I think, push, I mean, right along.
Just something to consider, the backlash of not getting it after we've tooted our horns so very hard in front of the entire city. And if we don't get it, the backlash is gonna be huge.
Well, well, I mean, personally, I think that, um, the, the community needs to know just in general the, you know, the, the push that we're doing, right? Because if we, but because if we receive it, yeah, if we wait until, let's say, we, we do receive it, then we're just celebrating. But if we're actually letting them know that we're finalists, because if you, if you look at the website, um, for Congresswoman Lofgren's, you know, the, the top fifteen, it's like maybe six, uh, for just the City of Morgan Hill, uh, Gilroy, all that. But if we let them know that Hollister is on the map, you know, then there is push, especially if it's until August. Um, you know, it's, you know, a few months in there. But in general, letting the community know that these are the type of opportunities that are there, especially after so many other cities, uh, and communities got, um, uh, funds from, uh, Lofgren's office. And I know there was a pushback from San Benito County not even applying because of a lack of information. So, I think that we need to put it out there that the. Yeah, just in general, because we need to let them know that we do have these type of opportunities, um, for, for the next round as well, you know?
I think we need to wait to discuss this any further until it's agendized.
But, but doesn't, for, to get the news out there, doesn't it need to be just agendized just to get the news out?
Well, so, so again, I think one thing is, is the, the city can take action to, to issue any kind of public notification about the efforts and, and the successes that we hope to get. Um, and I don't think that that detracts, because again, I think it speaks very highly of the organization that we are taking opportunities to pursue all kinds of funding sources for the betterment of our community and our constituents, right? So, that's a very important concept. And, um, so I think for our part, you know, we're pretty well decided what the, what the scope of that project is. If we would like to agendize and further the discussion on, on that level. Again, you know, happy to, to show you more about what's inclusive of the ten million, describe that to you guys. But from a policy standpoint, um, there's really not a piece to recommend at this point. Um, I don't think, do we have to technically receive that, like, a council action to, to the, the award of the earmark?
No, so.
We could agendize, uh, making a recommendation that you guys believe that, that they should receive the ten million, right? That's an action we could do.
Yes, so what, what would happen is that if we were funded, we would have to go to council to accept the appropriation. As far as an article, the city staff can always issue a press release on our own, I have that authority. Um, anybody as an individual can write in and do an op-ed individually. If you were to take action as the body of the Airport Advisory Committee, so you're submitting on behalf of the Airport Advisory Committee, then that's where you would have that, that authority. Um, and unless the city attorney tell, or tells me different, that's always something that I can just run on the agenda at our next council meeting to just get, you know, authority to have, you know, the, the, the commission speak as a body on the subject. And that's where, because, you know, as a commissioner, there's a difference between going out and just representing yourself as representing the commission without an authority, right? That type of thing, and it's the same thing with council, right? You know, that's why there's ad hoc committees and different types of committees. So, I think from that standpoint, that's where we could take it and just, I mean, that's a quick consent item that we'd put through there.
I think we should do it as quickly, some, some sort of action as quick as possible to get the, to get this news out. It's such big news. I mean, this is, this is a game changer for our airport and what we're trying to do. And, um, you know, our community needs to, to, this needs, these are the type of things that the Benito Link needs to be, you know, putting out there.
Great, so I think, I think we have a plan forward if, if, if that works. We can certainly put something out ourselves.
Yeah, to, to move something forward.
And we typically have, you know, quotes where we, we, you know, we can get quotes and those types of things. It's just, if an op-ed is written as the Airport Advisory Commission, then that's where you would, you know, typically agenda that, so. I, I'm, I'm sure we can get something across the finish line very, very quickly.
Great, thank you.
Do we need, do we need consensus for the, from the commission to do that? I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. And I don't know if anybody's opposed to do an op-ed.
I mean, I think the city manager has heard consensus to add it to the council agenda.
Great.
Are there any other commission questions or comments? I guess we need to go to. This was on the budget, right? I've lost my train of.
Yes, we, we, we kinda morphed into one of the staff reports.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Commissioner Wells had reached out to me and requested a, a quick brief at this point. Um, uh, we're gonna do a Taxiway, uh, Y and Z, kinda just a quick overview. Uh, Katie, are we able to bring up the file? Do we have the thumb drive capability? See, it's definitely doesn't show it on there. That's where the laser printer-
I think it's short, but it is gonna be there.
Do you see it, I, I see it come up on the, the book, but not on the screen? Okay, well, so I'll just give a quick verbal, so, so this is a presentation that we, um, submitted along with the earmark request to kind of give an overview. So the taxiway Alpha, or the, I'm sorry, taxiway Yankee and, and Zulu, Y and Z, it is the theoretical taxi system that connects the south end of, of the main runway and the west side of the airport. Basically, with, with, it integrates all movement of aircraft back towards the business park and on our west side property. So go ahead and scroll to the next page, please. So, again, uh, you have the long black line there that is perpendicular to the airport property. So, so what you have there is you have the yellow lots there with the round circles going all around. That's, that's the business park, that is our airpark business center. And so the taxiway, technically a taxi lane Y, is the west furthest left west version. And then the Zulu is, is the furthest to the, to the right side of the screen or furthest west. And so moving on to the next page here. So this was just an idea of the types of benefits we believe that could bring if the, uh, business park was built out, uh, with jobs and that sort of thing, that's an estimation, so keep going, please. So quickly, this was an analysis to say, um, what, what size of aircraft could we reasonably accommodate on a thirty-five foot wide taxiway? And so this shows here that we can operate, uh, Gulfstream Five on a thirty-five foot taxiway if you have the larger fillets, which are, are the turning, the turning radiuses. So that's what this was meant to answer from a technical standpoint going forward. Next page, please. So this is the taxiway Y side, which is, again, going towards the, the west existing hangers and where Whisk is. So this is where your airport properties, the, the lots that come up to our property line here. And again, I guess this does not, so the, the property line there is in the light blue. And so that's where your through-the-fence access is gonna be into those lots. And so aircraft are gonna come out and use that taxi lane. But you can see we've developed boxes there, they're in a blue with a hash on it. These are spaces where we could build potentially ground lease and build some hangers on our side. And we would like to show utilization of the same taxiway system so that it's not benefiting only one user group, the through-the-fence group. It actually is more integral than that so that we hopefully get FA's participation in ongoing maintenance costs. Um, notice here, one little detail is that the taxiway, there's an access road between the taxiway and the blue line for the fence. So again, this part of the ten million earmark would be to upgrade that, that road as well because aircraft have to go across that road, so that section definitely im- improves. Next slide, please. So this is, this changes a concept, which technically we would like to have the endorsement of the major landowners over on that side of the airport. But instead of one long, straight taxiway, I, we're saying if we came down extended taxiway Kilo, which is the existing taxiway Kilo, so Katie, go, go, uh, that's the runway, come back a little bit. So there you go, just follow it, just keep following that dark stuff, but now follow across to your left. So the existing Kilo right there, so that's kind of the end of the CAL FIRE lease, there's a little bit of space. Then we're gonna have a connector coming down, as Kilo extends, we're gonna come down and drop towards the business park. That allows us, again, to consider spaces that we can plan for. So those blue hash areas, those, those are, can be hangar buildings. Maybe it makes sense to develop some apron over there so aircraft don't have to park necessarily in the, in the business park, but they could actually park on airport property and walk over from, from there to the close buildings, right? So, so there's different considerations there. But again, what you'll notice is we cross that perimeter road. So again, we wanna improve the perimeter road clear around to the other side of the airport for such purposes as that eliminates then any vehicles needing to go around and cross the runways. Um, and in the future, hopefully with this increased activity, if the field trucks need to get to that side of the airport, that would also be available to them as well to use the improved. So there's a safety component to the project as well. Um, we can show one more concept, which is the same end, just demonstrating a different purpose to the business park, uh, to the landowners there. So again, I, I worked to develop this in, in the fall, I think, before January, and then I rolled it out to the landowners, yeah, somewhere right along in there, right, right before Christmas, and then the second meeting somewhere along the way. So shortly after Rod joined us as well, I think that was when we first- So, any questions on that? That's just a quick overview, but that's kind of what, in a nutshell, what we're hoping to, to have the ten million dollars support.
That was very helpful, thank you very much. I'm sure the public, um, is happy to see that, too.
Okay, excellent. So moving on, then, we, we had an update for the commission of the, um, July fourth, uh, fireworks show at the airport. So we've had a series of meetings with the Recreation Department, and our last meeting included, um, Public Works, Facilities, Fire and Police. And so out of this, you have a packet that was prepared to give you guys an idea of what we've been working on. So we have a map here that demonstrates, and actually three maps, that demonstrate various aspects of how we're gonna utilize the airport property to hold the event. Um, from an airport perspective, our role is to make sure that, that, you know, the facility is protected, that we can reasonably control the people and, and keep them separate from aircraft. So we don't want any damage to aircraft, we don't want people wandering all over the airport. We want them to be contained in the event area. And, um, to that extent, we're also focusing on, you know, those, those dug-on squirrels are undermining some of the parking areas, and we don't want broken ankles. So between now and July, we're, we're trying to grade in smooth and, and hopefully do a little bit of discouragement. It'd be nice to move those squirrels somewhere else, right? And, um, I think the main thing to point out here is that, um, the popularity of the event here in the, in the city has gotten to the place where they anticipate somewhere around four hundred and fifty cars and maybe as much as nine hundred people. And so we would anticipate trying to bring people, uh, through our property, our current property fence line, where they would enter in, we would close runway, uh, six two four. And the two four end here, we would actually use for parking, as the primary parking, because there's also two ways for us to exit you. And those people that are, are access challenged, um, um, you know, have accessibility issues, we want them to be able to get out on the smooth pavement so that they can enjoy the, the event. So having them come through this way, we, we come down in towards the barriers here at the edge. And so the flow of the traffic would be into the deepest point and back out. We also feel that that is good for San Felipe because we can have more cars waiting to get in, stacked up along the fence line, right, in their office in Felipe. So we, we think this was a really good plan. I'd like to point out that, that then, internal of the main entrance, that's more of an overflow parking situation because we're still gonna have potentially businesses, you know, the FBO might still be there working. And, and the main runway is staying open and active right up until probably about thirty minutes, maybe twenty minutes before the fireworks are anticipated to go off. Um, we have CAL FIRE there, so it's a concern, we wanna minimize closing both runways. Um, so, so the idea is here, um, we also, as part of the event, the Recreation Department wants to set up a stage and have a band playing down by the Sabrisus Restaurant. So we do hope that people would come out. Um, I believe in the itinerary page, the last page there, I believe it says that parking opens at five thirty PM. So, so of course, we would love to have people come out and enjoy the band and, and, uh, support our restaurant business there at the restaurant, and then come over and enjoy the event. And if you choose to just come to the event, there's gonna be several food vendors available, Jump House and other things of that nature. We anticipate the fireworks starting at about nine thirty. And so for airport purposes, uh, runway six two four will probably be closed from about four PM up until about, I think we said ten thirty, uh, AM the following morning. And then by then, we'll be able to do the FOD checks and we'll be able to sweep if necessary and have cleared any of the barriers and, and that sort of things from the event and return the facility to the, uh, aircraft serving that it is supposed to do. And with that, we, we did get a, uh, letter out to the airport tenants. Uh, we've asked that, um, aircraft that are up in this area, um, for the event on the apron area, we've asked them to come out and move their aircraft, and we've informed them that if they don't, um, our FBO will be moving their aircraft at their charge, uh, because the airport does have the right to, to have events. And we've, this has been a direction of the city council that, that they wish to have this happen at the airport. So with that, I'd like to say we encourage cooperation and, and if necessary, to assist you in moving your aircraft, then please contact the Hollister Jet Center and they will assist you and help you, okay? Um, we look forward to a, an excellent event.
Are tenants allowed to get, um, into their hangers during this time, through the gate?
Oh, no, 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 no. No, I, we, we, logistically, in all seriousness, logistically, we are trying to see if we have options. So part of it is if we can have security there, because what happens, right, is people are gonna wanna come to the fireworks show and see it, and a lot of locals know that they can go to the west side of the airport. You know, you're free to park in the business park space. Unfortunately, from airport rules and regulations and, and whatnot, if you come inside the fence and you're not a tenant, that is not a good situation for the airport, okay? And from a fire perspective, our fire marshal wants to keep the west side of the airport open because of the fallout from, from the fireworks, et cetera. So they, we, from a city and an airport perspective, it is not desirable to have tenants, non-tenants come in and park internal. If a tenant is coming to go to their hangar and is going to be at their hangar for a purpose, even if that purpose is viewing, I understand that, you pay a good dollar for your hangar. But what we don't want is, we don't also want tenants stopping along the access road and, and watching the fireworks from there, because that's meant to be cleared in case of a fire response, et cetera, okay? So, that all being said, we're still trying to, to make sure that the people on the west side could still get to their hangers, but, um, that's com- not completely solid yet, whether we can feel we can do that adequately from a security standpoint, so.
So if somebody were to say, go out to talk to the FBO about renting an airplane about seven o'clock on that day on July, or would they be able to gain access to go through the security gate and just park right in those spots right there? As long as they're not taking a vehicle or walking out on the tarmac or anything, just-
To, to access the FBO, you don't need to go through the security gate. You actually have public side parking and a public entrance. So, so if you're a member of the public and you're just coming to rent, to inquire about-
Not a member of the public, a tenant, there's somebody that has that around there.
Well, then, of course, you have your code, so, yeah, you could get it, mhm. And I'm, and, but I'm just saying, logistically, we're less worried about accesses on, on the event side because the other side, we have the issue of tenants should be able to come to their hangers and access their aircraft in their hangers, right? We just don't want people stacking up on the access road and whatnot, because again, we've been told by the fire marshal, we, we need to keep that area cleared. We also have Fourth of July fireworks sales going on throughout the ci- the city, and the airport is the place where, uh, vendors are required to return the fireworks every evening after they're done with their sales, when they, they close. They have to come and store them in, in containers out there. So they're accessing from that west side to the, get to their containers. So again, it's just, the dynamic on the west side is a little less desirable, and I'd like to think that we can work it out so that we can have people access, or either that or we'll have to say, you know, at five thirty or six or maybe seven, we stop accesses at the west unless it's fireworks people. And tenants that are already in can obviously get out, but, but we're not letting anyone else in after, after X amount of time, right?
How about hangers on the east side accessing? No problem, or?
Um, no problem, but, you know, airport staff are gonna be out there watching, making sure we're all behaving. And so we're, we're gonna be saying, you know, if you're coming there and then wanting to, to drive a vehicle up near the event to the, next to the food trucks or something like that, this is still an aircraft-serving ramp. The part of the ramp that is closed is for the event.
Right.
The rest of the ramp is treated as active aircraft area.
So tenants, let's say they're over by the current CAL FIRE. Uh, in the past, they've been able to bring their lawn chairs and sit outside their hangar to watch. Uh, that's not gonna be allowed.
Well, from my perspective, I would say, are they violating a taxiway object-free area? Are they, are they in violation of any aircraft movement protocols? So I would say, no, they are not, so I would welcome to come out and, and stay in front of their hangar, that's perfectly fine.
Just park their car somewhere else.
Uh, I, I think what the policy right now, when, when you guys park your cars, typically you park it right in front of your hangar so you're not blocking another, but I know there's multiples. Some of those lanes are pretty thin.
Yes.
So sometimes you have to park your car in after you pull your plane out, right? So you should follow similar protocols.
Okay, thank you.
Cause it's, as long as we're open, cause remember, the main runway's gonna remain open until the, uh, right up until the show. Uh, I can touch on that. So, um, for those thinking that, that they're going to invite many, many guests to come to their hangar and throw a barbecue and lawn chairs and have a big old spread and then watch the, uh, fireworks, that is not really acceptable under the fire code. So the point is that under an S occupancy, which is our designation for airport hangers, the occupancy is a lower person threshold. And remember, we discourage flammables, so we don't want barbecues and those types of things on the airport property, right? So, um, so again, coming out and enjoying more like a picnic style, I'm not gonna, however, we don't want trash blowing around and those types of things either, so, but plan accordingly, but yes. So let's, let's enjoy, but let's enjoy it the right way.
Thank you, Jeff.
And then last, I would like to report out on the restroom and conference room. So- So, so, the condition in there has, has elevated to the level of, of a remediation effort. So, we are working through an insurance claim to remediate the space. That is in process. I understand that we have tenants that are very frustrated. It is not fair that it's been out of service for a year, but we are trying to work forward on that. I have seen that they have removed the group's items. Those are being stored and they will be released back to us at some point here. But at this point, the remediation effort is continuing. So, hopefully, we are getting to a point certain where I can announce a completion date. But I'm not able to do that tonight. I can report out, it's in progress.
Thank you.
And that would conclude my reports unless there's any other question or requests on that.
Do we have any public comment? No public comment? Um, you, you need to fill out a card, or?
She filled out one earlier, so we know who she is.
Come on up, Ruth.
Um, in the past, my voice is still not here. In the past, Sal Rubino has had planes come in to, for people to observe and also had his barbecue or his party inside his hangar for his friends and some of the people from the airport. Now, will he be allowed to have that?
Between allow and which particular level is, is the discussion piece? Because it has to be under the threshold that's identified in the S occupancy. And so, I'm not the technical expert on that. That is our fire marshal. So, we would request that, a request to throw that kind of a party at your hangar that they actually enter into the city's event request. And they fill out the application, then, then that's where it would get the fire review as well as the airport's review.
I don't mean to be barbecuing, but he brings food in. But I mean, would, would you be telling the, the tenants this information? Or would they have to come to you and say, can we do this? I mean, would, how would they know unless you told them?
Chair Wells, this is an opportunity for public comment addressed to the commission. So, if you would like the director to answer questions, that's at your discretion.
I'm in a...
Yeah, I think Ruth, when it comes down to it, like I think Jeff was saying, it's gonna be a matter of occupancy. If, you know, he's got his, if, if there's gonna be anything going on in a, in one of those hangers, it's gotta meet the occupancy standard. I think that's what it comes down to.
I think it needs to be individually reviewed and a meeting between the tenant and the airport manager before they apply for the event application or whatever. Because in the past, Sal has brought down four or five rare warbirds from the Erickson collection out of Montressor, Oregon. And it's a big draw for the crowds. A lot of people like it. And I'll be darned if it isn't an airport. And these planes kinda use the airport.
I don't think the commission can make comments on public comment.
Yeah, I don't recommend that. Yeah, I don't recommend that because it takes away from the public commenter's three minutes.
But thi, this was a question for the Fourth of July.
Right, I think we can direct the, the airport director to comment.
The purpose of public comment is to address comments to the commission. If you have questions for the airport director that are simple questions that he could answer now, the, the chair can authorize that. Otherwise, I recommend speaking with him outside of a commission meeting.
I will authorize the airport director to comment.
Yeah, just, I would just say that, one, we, we are communicating to tenants that, that if it's a known issue, so, we have reached out to Sal. And two, we would be requesting that at some point, both it's, it's a notify the airport as well as fill out the city's event so that we can make sure that it's done properly and safely. Thank you.
And, and just to add something, Rod Powell, Assistant City Manager. In moving forward on this, we would make notifications to all occupants at the airport, advising them of the plan. And those that wish to hold something that's been mentioned at any scale would be invited to proceed with conversations with Jeff about the viability, the limitations, et cetera. That would be our path.
Thank you for that, Assistant City Manager. I think due to time, we will just move on to commission questions and comments on the airport director's report. I do not have any questions or comments that I haven't already asked tonight. I'm going to rely on the other commissioners who, to give any updates that they would like to report out on.
I just have a comment. Jeff, it was, I think it was, very well done as far as the, the Fourth of July and, and your, and your budget. Thank you very much. It, it cleared up a lot of things. And what great news about the, about the, about the award. Or the potential award, being a finalist, right? Yes.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? All right. And do we have any commissioner reports? I do not have a report. I'll rely on the other commissioners to provide a report. If not, no comments, no commissioner reports, okay? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.